Good evening and welcome to the Monday, January 22nd, 2024 Meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. We've been in a paperwork session we've just come out of and we'd like to start this meeting off by everyone rising to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply the United States of America into a republic, a which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up first, we have review and approval of consent items. We have an AP manifest for January 16th, 2024, in the amount of $178,926.37. One for January 23rd, 2024, in the amount of $31,160. Payroll manifest for January 18th, 2024, in the amount of $60,101.45. And then we have one for the 25th, but there's no number listed there.
$56,014.95.
You guys holding out on me?
I need to refresh.
All right, we'll go with Mr. Weber. We have tax reconciliation for December 2023. Town clerk reconciliation for December 2023. We have a purchase order for NRPC for 2024 Planning Services in the amount of $15,000. We have a notice of 2021 Appeal Withdrawal from the New Hampshire Board of Tax and Land Appeals by Sable Enterprises. And we have two veteran credit applications. Are there any items that anyone would like to remove or would like to discuss? What's the Sable Enterprises withdrawal?
So they had filed for a tax abatement?
Mm-hmm.
And that had been denied by the local assessor and they had appealed to the BTLA and they have withdrawn.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion on anything? If not, we'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Weber.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Queenen. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0. We have requests for other items or other business from anyone? Hearing none. Public input will occur no earlier than 6:45 PM. So first, we have a public hearing. Acceptance of Granite State Clean Fleets Grant pursuant to RSA 31,95-B. Acceptance of a Granite State Clean Fleets Grant in the amount of $209,875, of which $239,900 is state money and $59,975,000 is... No, $59,957, $75 to purchase a 24th plow truck as approved in the grant proposal. Wow, first day with my new tongue.
That's okay. It's a lot of numbers.
It is a lot of numbers for a guy that didn't like math. So up here, we have Mr. Brown, our road agent.
Kim, you want to run with this? Well, Kim and I both came across a VW Diesel Grant by the state about, almost exactly the same time, the same day. Kind of like, hey, did you see this? And we applied for it. We applied for two trucks, so it was Class 8 vehicles, over 30,000 GBW that are 2009 or older. And we put in our 2009 International and our 2000 International. So basically what they want to do is they take those, they scrap them and they're off the road and they help us to purchase a newer vehicle that's, you know, Tier 4, DEF compliant. We put in for two vehicles and we cut and I had a hard time getting bids. You know, people just aren't throwing bids out. And I got two from H.B. Fairfield of completely outfitted 100% trucks. And one was $299,000 and one was $150,000 and they approved the $300,000 truck. Which is fantastic. It's a 2024 Western Star Hook Truck, full plow system. It comes with a dump body that gets hooked, you can hook onto. And it also comes with a frame to put our sander on. It would help us measurably having, that'd be a vehicle that we could take a sander off and put it back on during the day. And, you know, looking down the road, talking to Dave, it could help us with some of the smaller dumpsters that Dave has, maybe save him some costs on pickup and delivery charges. So it's a great thing. So we will delete with this, with your approval, we'll delete the 2000 International, which is basically done anyway, and add this to the fleet via the VW Diesel Act. Now, just so you know, there's another one coming up in the spring, which we plan on putting the yellow 2009 back against. And then they just find Cummings $1.7 billion for the same exact thing. So I would assume in the next couple of years, we're going to see this happen again. And hopefully we can keep rolling with that, you know, with the minimal cost to us.
Very good.
So when you say it's a hook truck, so is it kind of like a dumpster roll-off kind of thing?
Very similar, yeah. So it's a six-wheeler like our Freightliner truck, but it has an arm that goes down and it hooks onto a frame and pulls it up. So you can pull up a sander, you can pull up a dump body, a flat body, you know, whatever you want. You know, our biggest problem at our shop right now is, you know, we need to go pick something up. We have to go and take the forks and take a sander off and then put a sander back on. And with this hook truck, we'll be able to just go over and literally, you know, five seconds, put it on. So we'd have a truck available. Plus, it replaces one of the, we have one newer 2019 Freightliner, we have two older heavy trucks. We have, you know, the three heavies, the big ones with the wings. And this will replace that old one that Jack Pinziero bought 100 years ago for $8,500, which, you know, it's basically done. Come down and sitting in the yard right now with one wheel off, I can't even get parts for it. You know what I mean? So it's really a cool thing. And that one's a standard. This is an automatic, a lot easier to drive, a lot easier to find drivers. So it's a good thing, you know, and it saves us $300,000. We don't have to ask the public for.
So it's a $240,000 trade-in.
Really, yeah. If you want to think of it that way, actually. So they'll take our, we'll take our ironed truck down the hall in Auto Parts. They'll cut a hole in the block, they'll cut the frame in half and it'll be completely unusable off the road. And so we give that up for this truck. We asked for us to get grants and we got them, so.
Great job.
So there's only two things. One is obviously there's a match by the town, that's the 59, which we are asking for you to allow us to use funds in the Public Works Expendable Trust Fund. And so that's a good reason to make sure that there's always funds available. Because as these grants come up and we apply for more, if there isn't money left in that fund and you haven't appropriated money for the purpose, you're in a bind. The second thing is there is a caveat where the town cannot get rid of this truck. And that means trade it in, sell it, or whatever, without, while it's in its useful life, without paying back the state. So.
It's a five-year, it's a five-year plan and it reduces every year, you know. So one, the first year would be $230,000 and it goes down to the fifth year at $26,000, I believe it was. So we need to keep it in use for five years.
At least five years.
That will be a problem.
I don't think it'll be a problem.
It'll be well-used for five years.
Yes, it will.
Very good. All right. Anybody have any further questions? You do.
I do.
Go ahead.
It's sort of related, but I had a citizen approach me and asked about salt on the roads and brine in particular.
Yes.
And I haven't done any research, so I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
The person said it could, not rot, but make a truck that has this in it, rust.
Okay.
So we pointed back to 2006, 2010 era where a Board of Selectmen meeting, and I haven't researched it, said we will not use brine. It was a vote by the Board of Selectmen back then. But again, I haven't researched this, so I don't know anything about this other than, I guess, we can have a sidebar conversation about it. But again, if it's going to rot a truck, I want to know about that. Do we use brine on the roads?
We started using brine this year. And the majority of the reason we're using that is because of stormwater management with the salt reduction. It's a way to reduce salt. So the amount of, the amount of salt used per gallon to get the brine content is 23%. It's less salt than if we went out there and just spread it with a spreader. You spread it with a spreader, it bounces off the road. I do it today. Tonight, by tomorrow morning, half of it's moved off to the side of the road. The brine goes down, it goes down in the cracks. And what it does is when, when it starts to snow, the snow actually catalyzes it and makes it start working and it keeps it from sticking to the road. And then when you put salt down on top of it, it's a catalyst for that salt to work even more. So you end up using less salt overall. We do have a product, it's called Magic Ice Mix, and it has a rust inhibitor in it that will add to the brine. So, you know, the science is deep.
Yeah, there was something about water freezing at 27 degrees, something about 27 degrees, you should use less brine than whatever. So I don't, I just said I would research it, especially if we're buying a new truck and it could rust a truck. So that's why I'm throwing it out there.
It's not, it's not in the truck. We have a tank, a poly tank that it gets sprayed from. It goes down the ground and then the air dries it and it leaves the salt in the cracks.
So what about our other fleet driving over this, other cars?
It's absolutely the same as driving over rock salt.
Well, your personal vehicle driving over same.
Fire trucks.
Yeah, you drive down the road, you see that big white cloud going behind you?
I'm just worried about rot. That's why I'm asking.
The brine will actually stop that from happening because it goes down and it actually adheres to the asphalt and it goes in the cracks. Where that's all rock salt that's been mashed up and becomes a powder.
And it sets in there.
And it just blows everywhere. So you drive down the road, you look in your mirror and you can see that. So the whole idea of the brine is that, there are other additives. We have, like I said, that magic additive, which has a molasses additive to it. And that carbohydrate acts as a catalyst to make the salt work in, you know, frigid freezing temperatures below, 10 degrees below. So regular salts, once it hits 19 degrees, it starts to slow down on its use, its effectiveness, I should say. And then when you add this stuff to it, it makes it go even deeper down into the cold. It's the wave of the future. We can, I can get all the science for you, I can bring it to you.
But I didn't know if there was a vote from the prior board, we're talking 12 years ago, that said we will not use brine. Now, are the scores coming into the factors? I don't know. So recently, I don't.
We can check it out.
So now, if they did vote no brine, and I don't know who was around back then, what would that mean?
I have no idea, but I don't believe that.
I don't know if it's, I don't know.
Do we know a year? Do we know a year or?
I think 2006, 2010 seemed more and more like the 2010 era. It was a Board of Selectmen vote that I believe they thought this was ruining the trucks and the fire truck running over it or something, so. Again, I haven't researched it, I just heard about this. Again, bringing a new truck with salt.
I've heard that thing with cars and everything else. With brine, the state's been using it all along. Over the years, I've heard what you have said, it works better than salt being down in caution. You've got the salt dust underneath the frame, which is worse than the brine. Because the brine will settle into it, because they go out prior to the storm.
Up to 10 days before.
Okay, and they get out there. So it settles and when it gets on it, then it'll react coming up.
Again, more procedure. I trust the science, it's the procedure. If that was a, we'll no longer use brine. And then if it is true, course of action.
The car washes today are probably going to have to get underspray boots.
I mean, I guess, I guess we have to research that. I guess we'll have to research that and figure that out. If not, I would assume we'd have to, if we were to use it again, we'd need a vote.
Make a motion to change.
You know what I mean? At that point, I planned on using it tomorrow.
I'm sure it's changed a lot in the last 10 years as well, 13 years.
Yeah. You know, the science has changed, the chemicals that we add to it have changed. Like I said, to alleviate anybody's issue with it, I can, I can provide, you know, information and paperwork on it and how it works. I could even bring in, we buy it from Granite State, the icing in Meramec, and I could have their representative come in and speak to you if that, if that's something that would help you out.
I think she's more concerned about a vote, a previous vote.
Yeah.
I know, I'm just saying, just to alleviate anybody's mind on why we're doing it now.
Yeah.
I think they're just concerned maybe water runoff going into the brooks or a million-dollar fire truck riding over it, maybe being a problem. And in case what you just said, if there's, well, I guess it's a tank now, it won't rot the truck. So that's just what triggered me to.
In all honesty, the brine on the ground adheres to the asphalt where, you know, just regular rock salt dropping, it gets crushed by the cars and it comes into a powder. So it doesn't adhere, it doesn't stay. And that's what, that's what moves out. And, you know, we could probably get some stormwater management information. That's the next move away from, you know, rock salt.
So that's, yeah, things change, but I just want to make sure we're covered.
I appreciate that, yeah, because I don't.
We have Chief Nickel here. You were around in 2010. Do you remember any discussion on that?
About the...
Use the board not wanting to use brine for rusting fire engines and stuff?
I don't really remember anything about that.
I don't either. I don't either.
I don't remember anything.
Yeah. So I think maybe in the meantime, we can authorize him to use it until we get further information.
I think so too. Here's the other side, that back then, we didn't use brine till recently in the state.
And it is the wave of the future, so.
And it's just recently that you've seen brine being used in the last four, four or five years. Prior to that, you didn't see much of it.
It's real big now. It's at a point where they're selling machines so you can make it yourself.
It's supposed to be better for the environment.
I remember, I remember some years ago, we bought and we had a tank and we did it for a season and then they didn't do it. But I don't know why they stopped doing that.
Okay. So.
Come to me.
So we should make a motion to use it.
Fire truck. I mean, to purchase the truck.
They'll take it. They'll take it. Thanks a lot, Steve. Here to purchase a truck.
Yeah, so let's do the acceptance first and then we'll do that after.
And I apologize, so the motion is very specific.
I'll make a motion to accept and authorize the town of Litchfield pursuant to RSA 31,95-B to enter into the New Hampshire Clean Diesel Program Grant Agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Air Resource Division in the amount of $299,875, of which $239,900 would be reimbursed from the grant and $59,975 will come from the Public Works Expendable Trust Fund. I further motion to authorize Kim Kleiner, Town Administrator, to enter into said agreement on behalf of the town of Litchfield and to execute any documents which may, in their judgment, be desirable or necessary to affect the purpose of this vote.
A motion from Mr. Weber and a second from Mr. Gannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Let's go.
Both you and Kim.
5%, 95%.
No, no, no.
So now we can do a motion to allow him to use brine until we get further information.
Yeah, I will make a motion to allow the...
Use of brine.
The use of, to allow the road agent to use the use of brine for the next 30 days until we can research the past.
History.
Vote, vote for history.
Yeah.
We have a motion from Mr. Gannon, I think that'll suffice. A second from Mr. Lynch. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0.
Thanks again.
Stick around.
Okay.
We've got public input coming next.
Okay, yeah.
So whereas it is 6:49 PM, we will open the floor up to public input.
We have one more public hearing, or you want to close the first one, do that, then reopen it.
Yeah, let's do public input first.
Okay, so we got to close the public hearing.
We'll close this public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion.
A motion from Mr. Weber and a second from Mr. Gannon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0. Public hearing number one is closed at 6:50. So now, we shall open it up to public input. Are there any members of the public who would like to come up and speak? Come on up, Mr. Donigan.
I'm Dick Donigan. I've been a homeowner in town, be 46 years next month. I've been in town for 50 years. I came as the principal of Good Memorial School in 1974, July 1st. And I had your brother as a student. I had Doug Nickel as a student. I had your brother and sister as a student. So I've been around a while.
I still do.
We just asked you for your address so the note taken.
12 Pecaso Circle, Litchfield. And I have two requests, and I'm glad that the road agent has stuck around. I don't know if I've talked to you or your predecessor over the last couple of years, but we live on a circle, a cul-de-sac. And every time it's plowed, there are two lanes of the highway that end up dumped in our driveways. And most of the people on my street are over 70. I'm in my 80th year. When Craig Young, rest his soul, plowed that street 50 years ago, 45 years ago, he started on the left-hand side of the circle. And he plowed around and he plowed it into the circle. So you left a banking of three to four feet in the circle, not in the occupants' driveways. When you plow it to the right and come around, not only are you dumping one lane in the driveway, you're dumping two lanes. Then, after he got done driving, Dougie St. Laurent had that route for years. An old pea-green diesel truck, an old dump truck. He did the same thing. Come in, he knew how to do a cul-de-sac and he plowed it in the circle. For a couple of winters, the next person that did it, did it the same way. And that was our good friend Ryan Lane, fine boy in town here. And he knew how to plow a circle. Evidently, whoever does it now doesn't understand. If you had a dry erase marker, I'd show you how a circle's supposed to be done up here. The person that comes into the right, when they get done with their two passes, they leave a tail out into the street. So over the last year or two, they've had to bring a pickup truck down after they plow the circle. And they plow that tailing into the circle again. So it seems to me it might be more efficient, less fuel, less machinery, to go back to doing it the way that they used to do it for the first 35 years that I lived in that, at that address. That's my suggestion and request. The other thing that I'd like to request is that for 20-odd years, when Albuquerque first opened up, there was a four-way stop sign at the corner of Albuquerque and Nessunkeg. And that was removed. And I'm here to tell you, if you want to go and put your life in your hands, go down on Nessunkeg, head north on Nessunkeg, and try to take a left turn to come up here. I've almost been taken out five or six, now one time by a cruiser. Because as you stop at that stop sign and you look to the right, you can't see anywhere around that bend in that corner. The brush and the trees are such that you can't see. Somebody's going to get killed. Somebody's going to, I don't know why they removed it. It was there for a ton of years and I think it needs to be put back there. Well, and not to cast aspersions on school students, but when high school gets out, and I'm leaving to go to the chiropractor at 2:30, you're taking your life in your hands to get out in that stream of traffic with 100-plus cars coming from the high school lot. Most of them driving much better vehicles than we drive. Yep.
I also live on Nessunkeg, on that side, and it is...
Treacherous.
Taking a left-hand turn.
It's treacherous.
You've got to go and commit.
Yeah. And my wife will be by my passenger, I'll say, is it all right? And she'll say, it looks good to me. And then, whoa, geez, put the brakes on.
The bushes have grown up over the years.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if we could push them too far back because I think now we're starting into private property.
Yeah, you've got a 15, you've got to, correct me if I'm wrong, road agent, 15-foot clear that the town owns, clearance back 15 feet.
50 feet to either side of the center line?
It's 50 feet on Albuquerque from the center line.
From the center line.
So we can, we'll, I will revisit and we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, take a ride down there at 2:30 and sit on that corner. Wait till the high school kids come by, because it's supposed to 35. And I venture a guess, you'll never catch anyone under 45 or 50. So I'd appreciate it.
I will absolutely take a look.
That's all I have to offer. And by the way, he's right, on the brine, they've been doing 93 for 25 or 30 years with the brine. My state of Vermont that I grew up in, been doing it for 20, 25 years. It's the best way to go.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, we did do research on the planning board about signage on Albuquerque and painting, you know, to do a study. But we needed engineers to commit, actual traffic engineers, we were not qualified for that. I think we probably should have put it on the Warren article to see if we would have paid for that. So it's, we missed that. So the deadline is dead, right, at this point? So the planning board had a grant, they did an initial study and they recommended some that we actually bring in traffic engineers to do, put, you know, stop signs where they need to be, especially near the high school, and look at all those intersections, including the one out here at Hillcrest. I think maybe we should get that on the next year's Warren article.
But it would be interesting to see, if it was originally there, how to get pull, how the...
Right, who authorized pulling it?
The Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen authorized it.
So here's my thing, if it was already on the original plan for Albuquerque, can we go back and put it on? Because it was already granted at one point.
Well, Steve, you can, you can put anything you want on Albuquerque, it's your call. I can't add signs. Signs are the selection. As a board, you decide to, I'll have them up tomorrow.
I believe, I believe that actually that was done by a former road agent, but also by the police chief at the time. I remember them removing it to try and make Albuquerque so that it flowed better.
Yeah, I think the original concept of Albuquerque was to have no stop signs, but.
Yes, in that, in that area, all the way through, the original thing.
Except for Pinecrest and Hillcrest.
When you get into the, when you come out and you're going to look left or right and being at the road to the left, you look to the left, you've got that road that goes in the odd duck in there, you know, right away, that's all it is. You've got to keep the brushing that cleared. Over the years, that has not, that has not been done. Okay, and that's where the problem lies. Kevin has already know, he's done a lot of brush clearing to the right as you grow up, so you better sight distance going down. Looking, I'm going to say south. Okay, but that's a maintained cycle, you've got to maintain that all the time. Once that was done the first time, it was great, the visibility was a lot better looking that way, no problem. But when you start looking to the north, you've got that pine tree area in there and all those pines, and they got to come out. Now, this town right away still. Okay, that's all town land.
Now, this summer, we, we ended this day looking southbound towards high school. We cleared that corner.
You did good.
We cleaned that up for someone that called and we took care of that.
Yep.
On the northbound side, people like that tree line when they're walking the path because it's, you know, there's coverage there, you know, in the direct sun. So we did thin that out a while back.
I'm talking about turning south. If you're looking south, but you want to turn left.
Yeah, from Nessunkeg, heading towards Albuquerque. It's the right, right is, right by the power lines. You have pretty much clear.
Off the path, we only have four or five before it's...
This is the opposite side of the path.
The path is on the opposite side of the road.
This is the opposite side of the path.
You're talking coming from the west.
We're coming from the west, okay, they're heading east on Nessunkeg to Albuquerque and your looks.
We cleared that corner on the right.
You did good in that corner there, yeah.
But the other thing that's obstruction there is a telephone pole is right in your line of vision besides the brush that encroaches the roadway. Take a ride down and take a look at it. Ask anyone to.
I've spent a lot of time looking down there. There's not much we can do about a telephone pole.
No, but you can cut the brush back or put the stop sign back.
So maybe we have Kevin and the police chief go down and take a look together.
Now, putting a new stop sign up isn't just as easy as me going down there and throwing a stop sign up. People who aren't going to know about it, that's going to be putting up, putting out, worried that it's going up. Putting up signs, maybe forwards, you know, 100 yards down, new stop sign, be there. It's going to be a lot more involved than just slapping signs.
We had talked about that on the planning board and Mr. Charbonneau was there, who deals with the traffic a lot. And he was saying, just willingly, just putting things up and lights and this, it's, you need a traffic engineer to tell you this, the liability's on the town. Probably shouldn't have been pulled, I agree, but.
No matter how long it takes to do it, if it saves a serious injury or the life of a resident, then it's right to do it. It's like, I picked up on Facebook the other day that they were castigating the superintendent off of calling snow because the storm wasn't that bad. There were about 75 people on Facebook saying it's a stupid thing to do and, you know, what's a little snow? Well, I'll tell you, if you're the administrator of those children and one of them gets killed or seriously injured, you want to live with that? Well, they used to do that in Meramec. Well, they used to do that in Merrimack. They used to never call snow. And that little boy was killed by the school bus that slid in the icy snow, killed him. From then on, Merrimack got a dusting, and they canceled school.
Agreed.
I'm all about safety.
That's it.
We are too, but what they're saying is, if we go put our own laws out there in road signs and strips, and
We're not asking for a whole bunch of them, we're asking for one.
But what they're saying is, if there's an accident there, they'll sue the town because we didn't have it, traffic, and, you know, a real
Well, we got to look at this whole
So it can be improved within the right of way, I'm sure.
Thank you very much.
But we need this back on the Warren articles.
Thank you, Mr. Donigan. I don't think we can get it off of there.
No, but we can't let it drop, so.
No, but we can do it ourselves. Nice. Nice, man, we'll all go.
Next Thanksgiving turkey, you get out of my backyard, I've got fifty-five.
A little tough.
Do they roost in the trees every night to fertilize your lawn?
We've got huge pines in our backyard, they fly up
Beautiful.
Every night right there.
Yep.
I got a couple of gobblers that are almost as big as I am.
You can stop.
Thank you, sir.
Fertilization's cheap for him.
All right. We can look into this.
Yeah, the snowplow circle? The snowplow?
Well, you know what, Kevin knows what needs to be done on that.
On the phone, yeah, circle?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That is how they used to do it. They used to go around
The opposite, they used to go the opposite
The problem down the road is that circle is built up. It's not a flat circle, open circle. In all honesty, the way I tell my guys to plow circles, you come in and you go clockwise.
Yeah.
First blade out, the rest, two or three blades in. Everybody gets a blade of snow, whether on a straightaway, whether on a cul-de-sac or dead end, everybody gets a blade of snow. And that's how we should be doing it now. I do have one truck in that area that does not have a wing, and it makes circles difficult.
Yeah.
And I have them down there because they're on a lot, on that side of the pine forest or some of the other roads. But I'll make sure that's taken care of.
Yeah. Especially where everyone on that street's elderly. Make these guys work harder than they have to either.
Well, we went down there, I went down there prior to the last snowstorm, and there are stakes in the circle. So someone on that circle doesn't want the snow in the circle. And so, you know.
Town owns the land in the circle, right? Okay. Go counterclockwise. It'll save a lot of headaches. Very good. All right, are there any other members of the public that would like to come up? Hearing none, we will close public input at 7:03 PM. And we will have another public hearing. This one on an illicit discharge ordinance. Ms. Kleiner, what do you got?
So this is actually not the first time that this ordinance has been discussed. It was discussed a couple of years ago. This illicit discharge ordinance is a requirement. And it's a requirement of our 2017 MS4 permit. And it does require that if there is an illicit discharge into the stormwater system, that a member of the town be notified. And not only that, that we are required to report that to New Hampshire DES. So you'll see the ordinance talks about, there's several different ways that a notification could come in, can come into the fire department, it can come in through code enforcement, and quite often, sometimes our code enforcement officer will bring this up, and then most often, our road agent will find them along his way. So it requires the fire department, the road agent, the code enforcement officer, and I to work together. Most of these are sometimes just an accident, and we just need to inform the resident that we need to be careful, and we need to make sure that these type of spills do not happen. But then it does also supply the board of selectmen some authority to force that these do not happen again. And like I said, it hasn't been an issue. We've been very fortunate, and we all take our MS4 area very seriously. But we are required to have the ordinance whether or not you've had the problems occur. So I don't see very much changing at all in the way that we do things, but it is an ordinance that we're required to, when we submit our MS4 permit each year, we have to check this box that the ordinance exists.
Looks pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions on it? Any members of the public have any questions on it? Is that why you're here? No? Kevin? It's the only reason to stay? You have anything to add?
No, I mean, we do outflow testing every year, and this is where we would pick it up. And then, of course, like Kim said, if I, you know, a car accident or a truck accident, these are those in.
Yeah.
It just gives us the authority to tell DES that we're doing the right thing. Not to mention, it's a 2017 law that we're not, we're not up to date.
We're close.
I will make a motion to approve the illicit discharge ordinance as proposed.
We have a motion from Mr. Gannon, second from Mr. Lynch.
Yes, and I'm very familiar, we had this where I worked before. And the way things were, so I used to be the guy who used to run around, who got the call from either the highway or somebody to go in there regarding access material, fuel or anything like that. It was, it's fun.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Something else to do, Doug.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Weber.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Public hearing is closed at 7:08. You got it right that time.
Good job.
Get a cookie. Let's see. Up next, we have approval of the minutes. Uh-oh, we have a question. Comment?
No, we have a problem.
Uh-oh.
We approved the December 21st, didn't we, Matt?
I don't know.
I think we did. May I ask you to table that? We should be approving the January 8th. Right?
I don't, I don't know if we did.
Or did you?
I don't remember.
I don't think we did.
I just caught it myself.
I knew one was missing.
Didn't we approve January 1st on the, I mean, January 8th? Didn't we approve the minutes then?
No, I think we may have tabled it. I don't, I don't remember.
It was about the energy
We did table one, I don't remember what the date was.
I thought we did
Later, we'll do that, we'll do both next week.
Is that, okay, I just want to double-check myself, I'm sorry.
So we tabled the minutes for January 8th. We'll do them both at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
To be on the February something, I don't know. All right, up next, we have a discussion on fire stipends. Now I know why you're here. All right, Kim, what's this about?
So the chief is going to speak to you regarding the difficulty on getting firefighters and officers to respond, and kind of a new way to think about doing this. So I will leave it to Chief Nickel.
Good evening. So as we've been trying to do for the last year, we're trying to streamline, make our services run better. Last year, you approved the weekend coverage, been very successful. Last year, just for weekend coverage, we had done two hundred calls a year, and surprisingly, we did two hundred and seven calls this year, just on the weekend call. So it's been, been very successful having the coverage at the station. The, and it's, it's been going on, it's been perpetuating for a while, but it's time to have a solution for it, is calls that happen at night, typically, especially now since COVID, I've spoken to you before about how the majority of our guys work full-time on other fire departments, we have guys that have families, we have guys that have other commitments at their full-time job, because, again, no matter what line of work you're in, everybody has a high time getting help. During the time, what we've seen over the last few years, is we've seen where we were going from an average of having seven to nine guys show up for a typical medical call, to now where we're seeing two, maybe three. But we've just recently hired a lot of new people. We have people that are inexperienced that are going to the calls. We've had an ongoing stipend for on-call officer for more than twelve years now, and what that does is it guarantees you that every night of the week, seven days a week, that we have a dedicated officer, either a lieutenant, a captain, or the deputy, that will go to and make sure that a call does not go unanswered. What we've been having recently is that we're not having enough firefighters or EMTs going to these calls. And what I've been seeing is I'm seeing that more times than not, two officers are going to the call. And we're up over forty-seven calls from last year. I'm trying to keep from guys from getting burnout, so I'm trying to find a way to, in order to get these other guys to basically step up and help out. I did a survey, I asked everybody, kind of knew the answers, but I wanted to make sure I had formal answers on why, you know, why are we having troubles? And I got the same thing I just basically said to you, overtime, family, and you know what, at two o'clock in the morning, for, you know, for what we're actually getting paid, it's not worth it to get out of bed and then have to go to work two hours later. We started a pilot program beginning of January, just to see how it works out with our existing budget. And what we did is, we offered out a stipend of thirty-five dollars for a firefighter or EMT that has to be certified, to sign up for a night, to guarantee that the on-call officer has a second person going with them. This is only for medical calls, which is the prux of what we do, and also for minor calls. When we get fire calls or anything of large scale, everybody comes. But for these, for these calls, and a lot of these calls, I went back over this past year, there's some nights we're doing five and six calls from eight o'clock at night until six o'clock the following morning. These guys still have to go to work the next day, and, you know, most of them are getting, you know, eighteen dollars an hour to stay out all night, and then have to go to their jobs. When I put out and, put out the feelers for doing a stipend, everybody's like, yeah, if I got thirty-five dollars just to be on call, I can guarantee you a night, I will go to a call, and then they will get their regular call pay on top of that if there's a fire or a medical call. If not, they're going to get the thirty-five dollars. To them, that was a win-win. And in the couple of weeks that we've been doing it, we've had people signing up. Then I don't have to worry about the on-call going out in a snowstorm, and, you know, god forbid he drives off the road, or you go, we show up a lot of times, the police are short-staffed, sometimes we go out for domestic-related medical calls, don't want one guy walking in by themselves. So we're not asking for any money, we're actually able to do it within the budget that we have, because we can't assume how many calls we're going to get, so obviously we have to have a factor, so that if we have a fire, we have enough money for the calls. With the amount of people that aren't going, the money that we're using basically offsets the people that aren't going to those calls. So by doing this program, we're within, what it basically does, we're adding to our on-call stipend program. The money still comes out of the same line item, which is call firefighter wages, doesn't increase anything. And if for some reason we find that we're starting to use that money up, we can back off the program. Again, it's a win-win, it guarantees that I have people that are going to calls, and it also is actually helping out, because it's getting people more involved, because these guys that weren't coming before, that are now starting to take the overnights, are signing up for weekend shifts, are doing more around the station. So to me, it actually invests them more into the department. So again, it was more to let you know that this is what we're doing, we'd like to continue doing it, we're not asking for any more money to do it, and like I said, we'll monitor it, and if for some reason we find that all of a sudden we get an influx of people going to calls, then we back off the program. But that's what we've been doing for the last couple of weeks, and hopefully we have your support to continue doing that.
So if you did do it every day for a year, you're looking at about twelve thousand seven hundred dollars. Right around that.
You're good.
You're very good. Yes.
Who told you? Yeah, so basically, what we, I mean, we had talked about doing this before, because, like I said, the whole reason for having the on-call system is, prior to doing this twelve years ago, if we had somebody that was possibly illegally burning, or, you know, you look out your window and you see flames through the woods, and you call the fire department, you're getting fifteen guys that you're paying, on average, two hundred dollars per call collectively, to go out to check an illegal burn. So we came up with having the on-call officer, so that you're paying one person to go out and check it, and in most cases, it's nothing, you know, it's non-emergent, and so it saves the town money. So all we're doing is, we're doing the same thing, where we'll have two dedicated people that'll be going to overnight calls, and then, like I said, if it's, you know, a car accident or something that's more people, you know, people-heavy, then, you know, all bets are off and everybody else will go. And I think in the long run, it's going to help us, because our guys aren't going to get burnt out. Like I said, it makes people more involved, and we're already seeing rewards from just a couple of weeks that we've been doing it.
So for roughly twelve thousand seven hundred, we will have two people on call, pretty much all the time?
Two people that will respond, right? And it's not an additional twelve thousand dollars we're asking for, it's just a notification.
So right now, for the, for the on-call officer portion, we already have budgeted ten thousand seven hundred dollars for the year. So this is an additional amount that's already within the
In the budget, yep.
One-twenty budget line item that we would be using for that purpose. And what, the only thing that we did do is, we bumped up the on-call officer, they were getting twenty dollars per night during the week, and then on the weekends, they were getting fifty dollars, because now you're talking about from eight AM, or, yeah, four PM Friday night until Saturday night. So it's a long period, so we gave them the fifty dollars. To make it easier, and also so that the officer, who actually has more responsibility, we've made it a flat fifty for every night for the officer, and thirty-five for the firefighter or EMT.
It's also a safety policy, right? To have two people responding instead of one. You could get one, you could get two, you never know who's going
Well, and the problem that we've had is, even I've gone out, the deputy's gone out, we'll listen, I mean, every call we have, I'll be up at two in the morning, I'll listen, and I'm like, oh my God, I only see one person on here, and then I'm like, okay, and I start getting dressed, and I'm just about ready to go out the door, and then he signs on. So now you've got three of us that are getting up that we don't, you know what I'm saying? Because we're concerned to have one person out there by themselves.
We can't, I mean, I can't tell you, I've been on the department almost eighteen years, I cannot tell you the number of calls, and more recently, over the last few years, that I've turned up for a medical call by myself at night, right? And, yeah, I don't mind, I mean, I have, you know, if I come down and get the rescue, if I'm going alone, I have all the tools I need. If I take my truck, the OV, I've got trauma tools that I need till the ambulance gets there. But at the end of the day, the liability of walking into someone's home, you know, as a military soldier, I mean, fire alarm knows, I'll call them, they'll know they're on scene, so they know I'm there. Twenty minutes later, they'll call and do a check, and if they don't hear from me. But twenty minutes is a long time if things go wrong inside.
Yep. I mean, in the past, the police used to go to every medical call that we had, so we always had kind of a second person, but now where they're having their issues, a lot of times, we don't see them at all, unless we
Unless we actually physically call for them.
Having a second person respond with you to some of these medical calls would definitely make it much easier and more attentive.
Well, and some, some calls depending, and that's the other, the other thing is just because we get dispatched for one thing, what you show up to sometimes is totally different than what you were called for. And a lot of times, it's worse than what it, you know, what it actually was dispatched as. So it's, sometimes you need those extra set of hands to, you know, take care of the issue until the ambulance gets there.
Okay. Kim?
No, I'm for it. I think it's a great leadership decision.
Just an operational change.
Right. I just, you know, the main thing is trying to be as transparent as I can. And I just wanna make sure that if somebody else hears about it and they come to one of you asking about it, I would just hate for you to be like, I had no clue the fire department was doing this. So we're just trying to be as transparent as we can and let you know what we're doing and what we're trying to do in order to make sure that the department functions properly and do everything that we can to keep the cost down on services.
Appreciate the transparency. I think it's also very creative. So I don't see any problems with this.
I would support it as well.
One hundred percent. I think it's a great thing. It's safety.
Kevin, you good?
I have no issues with it because it just makes sense.
No, I think it's great leadership.
I don't think.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful.
If you volunteer for the department, you gotta get up in the middle of the night though.
Well, unfortunately.
That's what happened to me when I was there for thirty-two, twenty-three years.
Unfortunately, as we all know, people's motivational
Skills are slow.
Skills are different nowadays.
Well said.
But you have to love what you do for thirty-five dollars to get you out at night.
True.
Really. I mean, it's a, it's a real dedication to, you know, what all the men and women of the force do.
Appreciate the support.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Now, how, is it thirty-five if they respond or every time they're on call, they'll get the thirty-five?
They'll get it regardless of, so basically, they're, they're saying, I will not go out tonight after eight o'clock. And I will make sure that no matter what, I go to a call.
They're guaranteeing their time for thirty-five dollars.
Right. Which is little money.
And it's, you've gotta love what you do to guarantee it for thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, we thought, we thought, you know, we, Chief and I thought quite a bit about what was gonna make sense. So we just, again, just being fiscally responsible and trying to understand what makes sense, but what's gonna be enough to get us the operational enhancement that we need. This seemed to be where we settled and it's working pretty well.
That's great.
And we're just
Thank everybody for that because that's, that's fantastic.
And we're, and you know, it's, these small little dividends, we've instituted a lot of different things in the last even six months. And we're getting a lot more buy-in from people and we're seeing the dividends from it. So that's why I'd like to continue where I can to identify issues that we've had in the past and actually come to a resolution for it.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Be further help, let us know.
Appreciate the way you guys are working together.
Thank you.
That's good.
It's your department, you gotta run it your way. But thanks for keeping us in the loop.
You're welcome.
Ouch.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Thanks, Doc.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, you too.
See some of you guys tomorrow.
All right, up next. Discussion, Health Officer Local Health Board.
So last week, there were some questions raised during public comment that the board, I think we rightfully needed to find the answers to. So I spent a good amount of time with the state health officer. And we walked through all of the points that were brought up in public comment. And I think it worked out really well. Because I think there are def, there's definitely some misconceptions out in the public as to what a local health officer does versus a health officer, say, in Manchester or Nashua. Totally different. And during this conversation and review, we realized that there was a point in the farmer's market ordinance that really needed to be removed. So, and she and I, her name is Sophie, and we talked for quite a while about this. So a farmer's market, when you operate a farmer's market, you're operating under like a homestead. So there's no license that is required to sell the food that you make at a farmer's market, a farm stand, or a retail store unless you meet a certain threshold of sales. So in this document that I've outlined for you, it speaks to that. And so we went and took the health officer, the police department, the fire department, and I reviewed that farmer's market ordinance again. You'll see there's quite a bit of it that we struck. Because if there was an issue at a farmer's market, the person who's running the market needs to keep a list of the vendors that are there because they would need to supply that to the health officer if there, if there was a mass, you know, someone got sick and we had to report it to the state. But that would be all that we are doing, is we would be reporting it to the state. We would not be licensing the food that would be at the market. So that was a very important point that came up. We reviewed the ordinance. We're gonna leave the ordinance with you to look over again because there's quite a few changes. I clearly struck through the old language, so you could see the old language and the new. Even if they are not required to have a license though, they still are required to label. And so I have given you a list of what's required on the label. So then there was a question as to what is the role of our local health officer? So RSA one twenty-eight requires that the Board of Selectmen appoints a health officer. It's not a request, it is you shall appoint. That person is then cleared with the state. And they are appointed by the state. And then after they are appointed, there's a background check that is run and required. So both our local health officer and our deputy have both had background checks and both been submitted to the state. The health officer in regards to food safety is only required to report food-related outbreaks.
Food to state.
Or if there, we find an unlicensed food establishment, an unlicensed restaurant, report it to the state. Report food-related complaints or food tampering. Report renovations that may be done to food establishments that aren't permitted and already aware of the state. Report closures and report public health hazards. So the important thing to remember here is our local health officer is not required to go out and do inspections. It's not his job. He reports findings to the state. RSA one forty-three does require licensing for food establishments, retail stores, grocery stores, schools, cafeterias, restaurants. They are licensed by the state. Even under that law, establishes, establishments that do not require a license from the state are fairs. So are events at Dara, the Christmas tree lighting, anything that is at a fixed location for a temporary period of time, not to exceed two weeks in connection with a fair, a carnival, public exhibition, or a transitory gathering. They may be inspected by the state, but they are not required to have inspections and they are not licensed. So while we do always push and advise that people have labels as to it's gluten-free, it's not gluten-free, it contains nuts, all those type of things. You're not gonna find our local health officer walking through and doing inspections at those places. And then there's another one that actually talks about four days during a thirty-day period. Our associate at the state was very helpful to say, you know, a lot of people get, have some misinformation, the Darefield Fair. Not inspected.
Because it's less than two weeks.
That's right. So, but I bet you a lot of people think it is. But it isn't. Soup kitchens are not because they are not charging. And then childcare centers, youth camps, nursing homes, those are all done by a separate area of the, of the state. The required training. So legislation under RSA one twenty-eight, June of twenty-one, requires new and renewing health officers and their deputies to take a three-hour training course within the first year of their appointment. Both of ours have. Both have completed that course. And that is considered certified.
Do they have to refresh Chevy so many years or?
No. And I asked the question, they said there are new, there's new information that comes out. They receive it. They are on what they call a listserv. And they have to acknowledge that they've read this, you know, material.
Plus, they also have each year, the health officers, there's association, will be working with the state and we all get that new stuff together. And they go to the meetings, everything. It's all related to the association.
Essentially have ongoing training.
Correct.
Yeah, so there's a, one that will be coming up in March. It's actually gonna be held in Nashua this year. And they will be doing a bunch of new training. And they actually said anyone that would like to go is invited to attend, anyone from the town. So the one piece that is new, that we did not quite understand, this is an excellent exercise to go through, was in twenty-one, RSA one twenty-eight, semicolon, three, requires the Board of Selectmen and the health officer, the health officer acts as your secretary, to have a meeting. Now, our state associate said this is new. There are many towns that just haven't come up to it yet and are, haven't, but it is actually required. So the meeting can be during one of your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meetings. It just has to be noticed as such. And you have to allow residents to have the opportunity and come forward and express any health-related concerns. So once a year, we need to set that up and, you know, we'll leave it to the board as to when you think that's a good idea. Times like currently, we are at peak for RSV, COVID, and influenza. So right now, that's the majority of the things that are hitting. And so that brings me to the final point. Both the health officer and I weekly receive updates from the Public Health, Greater Nashua Health Region. So the Greater Nashua Public Health Region includes Amherst, Brookline, Hollis, Hudson, Litchfield, Lindenboro, Mason, Merrimack, Milford, Mount Vernon, Nashua, Palom, Wynton, part of our group.
And RPC.
It's very similar.
It is.
It is.
And so they work every week to put together a bulletin, which both Jeff and I receive. And it talks about the, you know, what they're seeing for trends, how many people have been affected. It still does talk about COVID outbreaks and what the outbreaks are. If you're looking for COVID tests, there's a site we can point you to to get free tests and all that type of thing. So we thank them for keeping us involved every week. But we do get that information. And should we ever see anything that was of a major concern to Litchfield, of course, we'd let you know immediately.
Just to add to that, there's one other thing here that with this health officer's requirement, the subsurface. We used to inspect the leach fields here, most towns did. And here, you do it because our regulations are different than the state. We have a one-hundred set back for wetlands from a leach field. The state is only seventy-five. That's why I require, when I was here, I always required that the system be sent here for approval so that before it goes to the state, it meets the town requirements. The state can approve it and say, too bad. But it has to go back because it doesn't meet the criteria of the town that it's gonna be in. Okay, so that's what we used to do here. And I got to go out and look at the bed, the bed bomb. You gotta have a little, you gotta know what you're looking at, dirt. Around here is sand, okay?
Sand and clay.
Yeah. So it's not bad. But that's one of the requirements in the health, in the well and subsurface areas required. Because the state has a DES inspector that comes down and inspects the leach fields. But they are only looking at the state requirements for it, not the town requirements. They cannot enforce that, it's a separate thing. So you gotta stay on top of that with the leach fields. Now, if the town actually went back to seventy-five feet like most of the state, we wouldn't be involved with this as much. But that, this town's just a little more strict. And that's what we had to do. I've been doing it, and I've been doing that for years. When I worked in Lunandary, Milford in here, that's what I had to do, inspect everything. They all had a little different regulation.
So I have a question on how this is applied. So it says no more than four days during a thirty-day period. So if we have somebody comes in and says, I wanna run, we'll use Nashua's, you know, they have a farmer's market every weekend, so they have it two days during the week for a month, that's more than the time allotment. So how does that work? Do they, can they, can someone come in and say, I wanna run a farmer's market every weekend for the next four months? And then that changes?
So the requirements are, for a farmer's market, they're not required to be licensed. If, so change that up, have it, have it be something else. If there was someone that was coming in and, and running a fair.
Occasional food service establishments and events.
Right. But not a farmer's market because a farmer's market is, is kind of exempt from having to do that.
But then say if at a farmer's market, they have a hot dog stand that comes in every weekend, does that fall into the farmer's market or is that?
That would be a mobile food unit.
That's a mobile food unit.
That's a mobile food unit and they have to be licensed by the state.
By the state, yeah. Yeah. But if you were, say, the town decided, we're gonna have a fair every weekend at Dara. Now you could get into that more than four days.
Over a thirty-day period.
Again, it would not be our local health inspector that would be inspecting that. He would let He would let the state know, and the state would make the determination.
Yep.
Okay.
And they, you know, they do have a lot of discretion when deciding whether or not they were going to require you to be licensed.
It depends on a lot of things related to the type of vendors you're gonna have, or the type of food that you're gonna sell, or something like that.
How many people are.
Carrots. Smoking Spanx in the hot dog truck or a food truck, they're still, they need to be licensed.
They have to be, no matter what.
Regardless.
Well, I wanna thank you, I think you did a great job. I think you and Wyn did a great job creating this, because I do not see a lot of strikeouts in here. I, the local, this, you know, confusion, I appreciate that. So I think you both were pretty much in sync. Thank you for the clarification.
I think we did, um, you know, once, we could clearly look at it all, and we had a lot of discussion. Um between the, the fire department and myself on, it's an event, look at the farmer's market. As an event, not as like a home occupation. So we actually struck the part where you'd go to planning board, because we don't think it's required. What we think is required is that you do a, a type of plan. A site plan so that the chief can look at it and determine if there's traffic issues or things of that sort. Um but we don't see it as needing to go to.
And everything you've mentioned here, I'm not shocked about, because of us, he's reached, they're just talking to me and him with you. So everything here, I think we're in sync, other than the local about the labeling, or whatever that was there. And, and again, this wasn't struck out a lot, so this still is in good shape, but the rest, I think was okay, it's right.
And it, I did, you know, so I, when we were talking um with the state. You know, the large difference between someone like, you know, our local health inspector, or a health inspector. In say, one of the larger cities is, they actually have medical background, they have, you know, biology degrees. There's a, a lot of licensing that actually occurs at that level. Where ours are, are just. Trained enough to realize if there's an issue, what I do, who I call.
I'd respond.
I still want him to look at this, though, to have a chance, because again, ninety-nine percent of it, I don't think changed, so. I just wanna make sure, you know, I, I, because I'm seeing this for the, you know, first time as well, but it just didn't change. So I think he was dead on, both of you, so. Thank you.
Any more discussion? And then up next. Hockers and Peddlers permit requests. We have three of them.
Yes, so there are three um applications that came in. And um this is a group that has been in Litchfield before. Uh power home remodeling, they, they go around and give um. Residents information on siding and windows and things of that sort, so they're familiar with Litchfield. There were three, we're only um suggesting approval of two of them um this evening. One had a discrepancy in the application, so we're asking, um they've been through the police chief. We're asking for approval of Jonathan Chels, uh Chel, I don't know if I'll say it correctly.
Chalzer?
Yeah.
Alex Drummond?
And Reed McDuffie.
I have Nicholas McDuffie on this.
Nicholas McDuffie, yeah.
Number two?
So one and two.
So one and two, yes.
Okay, that's why I make sure.
Now, I, I think in the past, the board had asked that um we have their license numbers, we. We do have that, the police department will have that, so if any of our residents have any concerns. They can certainly call the police department, they'll be able to tell you the license plate, and they will have, we will issue them a placard for their window.
Anyone have anything on this? Anything good? Need a motion to approve these, right?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve uh for a twenty twenty-four. Hockers and Peddlers license for Jonathan Chalston. And, do you want two, or can we do it one?
You can do them together.
Okay. And Nicholas McDuffie.
I'll second it.
A motion for Mr. Gannon and a second from Mr. Lynch. Here and none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Very good. Up next, New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration Equalization Study.
Yes, so um. Some people look for this, um and I think actually it's something we should probably put on the, on the town website. So every year, there are, the sales of a municipality. Go through what they call an equalization ratio study, the sales are looked at to see if they are qualifying sales. Meaning they're an arms-length transaction. You're not selling to your son, or, you know, I'm selling to my daughter, or where you might discount uh the value of your home. Um so those qualified sales are then um put into this study. And the Department of Revenue and Administration determines what your house's. Assessment is at compared to the market value. So our ratio for twenty twenty-three is seventy point five percent. And of course, that's not unexpected, um you know, it's pretty much what we've seen. Um in this southern area of, of New Hampshire, and knowing that you have a revaluation. Coming in twenty twenty-five, um that's when your homes are reassessed to bring them up to market value.
Bring them down to the value, still.
We would all like to see that, that happen, but.
Didn't have the last time either.
No, no. Still, there is a housing shortage, um so that affects the market um quite a bit. But the Department of Revenue um looks at a number of different things. When they are doing this study to ensure that. Our assessments look accurate. And so they actually look at the coefficient of dispersion and things of that sort, and all of our metrics came in line. So that is, that is good news. So, we might be at seventy and a half, but um they look like they are accurate and. We'll look and see what happens in twenty twenty-five with the revaluation. But it is also a, a ratio that if people are abating taxes. Um it gets worked into the calculation if they are abating their. Assessment.
Very good. Anyone have any questions, discussion? All right. Next up, we have warrant article change, highway warrant article and petitioned warrant articles. What do we got here?
So there was a um. Discrepancy between um what we thought we could do. After, with me talking to the Department of Revenue Administration, the DRA, and with legal. Because we are an SB two town. They will not allow us um to use the offset of the library. And the um highway, seasonal, and the cemeteries. In calculating the amount of the salary for the first year. The hard part is, you can't take it out of the budget either, right? So if you take it out of the budget and the warrant article fails, you have no money to hire your contractors. So it's what legal calls raising and appropriating it twice. You're doing it through the budget, because it's in the budget, and you have to do it through the warrant article as well.
Others would call it double dipping.
I was trying to stay away from that, but, yes.
One of my favorite terms.
And, you know, they will let us state, and of course, we can explain at deliberative, but it's very hard. If residents aren't at deliberative to understand. We can actually put into the warrant article that a savings will be created. From cemetery and seasonal and library when they're removed the following year. Um but that's all about all we can do. So this raised quite a bit of um concern with us last week. Oh, yeah. Poor Kevin. I cannot stress how strongly I believe this position is needed.
Can we flip the graph? Right now, we're showing the first year, taking the monies from those three entities, right? Can we flip to raise and appropriate for the first year, then the second year, it goes down.
So you're not raising and appropriating to the warrant article anything in the second year?
We're showing, we're showing the taxpayer the benefit in the second year, it may help explain things better.
I could check.
So we're still raising appropriate, just in the chart itself, because if we're gonna go off and speak about it, it's gonna be easier to actually see it, I think, than listen to the words. Or can we do it, at least in the voter's guide that goes out, explain it that way with the chart flipped?
So I think definitely in the voter's guide, because they said what you do in the voter's guide is you have a lot more leeway with. It's just the warrant article itself, and the fact now that. We have to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand that first year. Which is the full benefits and, and salary from April first.
My initial response would be they shouldn't have an issue, because there's a lot of times we show future years, right? How we're gonna break down the payment over the year, so it's just more information, what they really care about, I assume, is whether you're going to raise and appropriate. So it might be a way. Correct. So it might be a way of still doing it, just by flipping those two columns.
And I think we could, even on our slide show for deliberative. Kinda, you know, really make it obvious, this is what we're talking about, there's this amount of money. In these budgets of, for twenty twenty-five, they will be reduced should the warrant article pass. So therefore, the hundred and five that that person would have cost you, you know, will now um be sixty-something. The concern was, when we looked at this, was okay, now we're right up against the tax cap, right? So we, the budget committee left it a dollar um under the cap with the warrant articles they had already approved. So Karen and I went back and kinda went through everything and said, well, what are we going to do? And one of the things that came up to us was our interest revenue. For last year was a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So looking at the budget, we felt that that was way underestimated. Already for January. We received thirty-three thousand dollars in one month. So we felt quite comfortable raising that interest revenue. Um which offsets and creates enough room under the cap for the budget committee to approve this. And you folks to approve it if you see fit, um under the cap. If we hadn't had to do this up, this um exercise, we might not have looked at those revenues again, so. I mean, that's a positive thing. But I don't expect interest rates to lower um anytime soon. And like I said, we're, last year, we were, we way over what we had estimated. Um from sixty to a hundred and fifty-two. So we feel quite comfortable, it does require the selectmen to revote the article. At the seventy-five, nine forty-five. Um and we'll have to request for budget to put us on Thursday night's agenda for them to revote it as well.
Do they have to revoke the budget now also, because we're?
Great question, we asked, um and we were concerned about the public hearing. So we asked legal, and legal said, no, the budget number itself is not changing.
Just the revenues, huh?
The, just the revenues, which created more room under the cap, and then the warrant article. And the public hearing is actually only on the operating budget. We give the warrant article information as well, but you're not required to. Go back and give another public hearing, um so they could just vote it. But it's a. You know, with the amount of work that highway has already taken on. The stormwater, helping out conservation, helping out recreation. I mean, this is it, this is all we have during the day, um to get any item that stop, jumps forward. We need this fourth person desperately. Um and I think we worked so well with library and cemeteries to come to. This kind of fix, um where we could actually save the residents some money. While getting another worker and. You know, they just, not all parties agreed on how we could do it, unfortunately.
So what happens if we do nothing? We leave it as it was? Am I missing something?
We'll have the warrant article kicked back. It'll be unlawful.
What do you mean kicked back? Why did that explain to me? Approved whatever we had last time, right?
So we had um voted, we had the article voting and appropriating forty-eight thousand nine seventy-one? Something like that. Um which was the full salary less the library budget.
The DRA won.
And that, that won't pass, yeah. So it'll be kicked back, and the warrant article would be no good.
So you'll have to rely on people, A, reading the information, or going to deliberative to understand. Because when you look at these numbers, it's hard to understand what's going on.
Right.
Really read it and understand, know, you, you get it, but without seeing those removals. That's why I was curious, can we flop the two columns?
I don't see, uh, so twenty twenty-five, I. I'm, I'm gonna go back and I wanna make sure we're both legal. I'm I'm gonna go back and I wanna make sure with both legal and the D R A that it would be okay. Um, but I don't think twenty twenty-five is the, that's just a chart that's more informational. It's the twenty twenty-four where you're raising and appropriating and taxing. Um, that especially in an S B two town with a tax cap, you have to be very careful of. Um, they, legal did suggest the language of. If this article passes, it will reduce or eliminate expenditures from the cemetery, library, landscaping. And hi- highway seasonal work line items in the operating budget. That was legal's um language. I just don't think that that may be enough for residents to understand. Wait a minute, there's gonna be savings offset here, so that's my concern.
Could you put the dollar values in next to it?
I think we could put the dollar numbers next to it.
That might be a way of doing it and then also do the chart below it, so now they can picture.
Yeah, connect the two.
Connect the two together.
Right.
I guess, I, the biggest concern I had was we need budget to approve it. It's not approved by budget and under the cap and it'll fail. You know, and and you know, you're rolling dice on anything and the more information we give them, the better. Well, we need budget to be able to approve this.
Correct.
My concern is that it doesn't look clean anymore. It looked clean before. Um, I I think, I honestly think that this was kind of rushed. Um, I had no idea we were asking for a new person until the night we saw the warrants and we were asked to vote on them. It had been discussed that maybe at some point, we were gonna combine these other positions. And put them into the highway. But no one ever came to me and said, we need a new highway guy before the night of the warrants. So I, I mean, I, I had reservations, but I, I voted to go along with it. But I think with this coming forward, I think the best thing to do is probably to put it off to next year. And come back with a, with a full, fully. I just, I just don't think it, it looks clean anymore. Kevin, and again, you know, I've, I've always supported getting you guys the help you need. But again, I didn't see anything about this until the night we were expected to vote on it. So I was kind of blindsided.
But then now what would that do to?
Yeah.
Library, cemetery.
It just means the contracts would go out because they have bids. So I, I think we should hold off on this and come back next year when we can have it nice and clean for the voters to look at. And I, I'm often very critical of another board in town that does things that doesn't always look clean. Well, I mean. I think, I think we, we go to the voters and we say, next year, we're gonna bring forth this and this is how we're going to do it. Okay, again, we didn't, we didn't see the warrants until the night that they were presented to us for voting, so. It was, that was kind of tough and and I had, we had a lot of discussions about different things to go along with these. Um, it just, to me, I.
What did the rest of your, the budget committee do?
You're gonna be in the same situation next year. You're gonna, it, the, the, the warrant article, the warrant isn't gonna change from this at all.
I for years have been.
But I think you can be upfront with the voters and say, this is what we want to do.
Yeah, I agree.
We're gonna have deliberative, we're gonna have the voters, you know what I mean? It's, it's not gonna be any sneaky or.
It just doesn't look right. You know, at this point, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't look right.
For years, I've been always saying we need more people in highway. I mean, we kept getting, we kept getting truck after truck after truck given to us and we never got a person to put into it. I mean, for the people, for the amount of work you do for this town with a limited number of people we have. We need to, I mean, we have to give the services. There's no other way to give the services other than give highway more personnel. I also am a firm believer that we eventually have to get a public works and try to combine solid waste, highway together. Then we have a group of employees that we can give more hours to. And they can be very fluid back and forth of where they need the staff. Um, I, I honestly think highway needs this fourth person. I really do.
I do agree.
I mean, we have a hundred and forty-four lane miles, I believe, we have. Hundred and sixty-three that we have to take care of now. You know, and then on top of it, all the, everything that concept.
I don't, I don't understand how we can be any clearer a year from now. I mean, telling everybody for the next year, we're gonna do this. I mean, I, I understand you giving more information, but it, but how much clarity can we make?
Well, again, I'm, I'll just say that I had no idea this was coming forward until the night we voted on it. So I mean, if the board didn't know, or maybe members knew and maybe I'm just, maybe I'm the one that didn't know. I mean, I had, I had questions, I had reservations about it, I didn't like the way it was structured. It kind of looked like you would, you know, we were, we're bringing on a highway guy, but we're bringing on, we're, we're taking it out of here, out of here, or here. And it just, to me, it just, it doesn't, it didn't look right in the start and. I voted to support it and I've always thought you needed more people. I mean, I've never not supported getting more people. But now, this is like a twenty-third hour where we're coming up with something that. I know there'll be people on the budget committee that'll wanna be tearing, tearing me apart on it. But I just, I think the best thing to do is to inform the public for the next year what's going on and what we want to do. And then, and then if you do it this way, so be it. At least we're not changing something at the last minute. It, it, it just, it doesn't sit right with me, it just doesn't.
Well, I think the only thing changing though is the verbiage. Or how we have to do it in order to meet the D R A. I mean, the funding mechanism is still exactly the same.
The numbers are still the same.
Everything we're doing is the same, it's just that they have to change the verbiage because as I said, it didn't meet the D R A.
And the last eight thousand dollars out of my budget to make this work.
Yes. I don't want it to be a beat up on Bob session because I'm in the same camp. I think this is eleventh hour, at eleventh minute, eleven second. I'm getting tired of it. Um, and I'm tired of walking in meetings and finding this kind of thing, so. One day, two day notice is not great. I agree, if we can come up with a better wording, I would go for that. So it's cleaner, but I need to hear it better.
There is no other way that.
How is it written?
Warrant articles are prescriptive. You are, especially when you are an S B two town.
Oh, God, yeah.
The way that you have to raise and appropriate funds is, it's described. It's, it's very prescribed by the um Department of Revenue. Um, I agree. I think it's absolutely crazy that you can't say, we only need forty-eight thousand dollars. Because if you pass this warrant article, we already have, you know, thirty-eight, thirty-nine over here. I, I agree, I think, but that's, that's not our call. That is the state law. Um, that you cannot use funds that are already budgeted within the operating budget. Um, you must raise and appropriate in the warrant article the full amount.
So. And I'll just say again that, uh, you know, and I said it in the email, that we shouldn't be voting on things that we see that night. And that's something we brought up a couple of years ago on this board, not to vote on items that we haven't had a chance to, to go through. Um, and I thought we made it a policy, maybe, maybe we didn't make it an official policy.
Last week, and again, I know you need the driver.
Yeah, there's no question about it, it's just how it looks.
You need the worker, yes, you do.
I like the idea how they got to fund it. And the other departments wanna, were along with the idea to make it work. So they're not paying for it in their budgets. We're having the highway do it, uh, funded the whole thing, it's just a matter of transferring the load, is what I'm seeing this as. Okay?
But how do you explain, that, the problem is that it loses that finesse in the way it's written. Because now it's looking like we need seventy-five thousand this year and a hundred and five, five thousand next year, but the seventy-five is offset. But it will be offset and you can't. So I know if I was looking at it and as a citizen, I'd say, why is the library tuning in on this? Why is the cemetery? Then you could read it and say, you know, library, landscape, highway seasonal, but I don't know if that's enough for them to comprehend.
I agree, but again, we had absolutely no indication. That this was an issue until Thursday and we were, I mean, that, that's when. It came to us that there was an issue with the article, so we had. You know, I think we did our very best to figure out how we could still make the article work for the taxpayers.
I'm just rereading the last line legal added. Saying Joe Public, Jane Doe, we're gonna read that and think seventy-five, seventy-six thousand, hundred and five thousand. And not know what eliminate expenditures means. Salary.
Another guy in one of your trucks, which means we could have one less contractor.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
It's all about timing here. But it's all about, the bottom line makes sense. But it's timing. Budgets never make sense. Timing does make this whole thing. The timing makes sense because the bottom line, the bottom line's gonna be better.
Right, the bottom line will be.
It'll be much better.
The, for the, for the residents of Litchfield, it will be much better once.
That's how I look at this.
And we will have a lot of resources that we can use to help other departments.
monetarily and from serviceability.
And I don't think anybody disagrees with that, I just think that the last minute changes is, is, it's a, it's a, it's a red flag.
But in the past, we've had things that had to change because of the D R A. I mean, we get the warrant articles written through legal. And then they have to all get approved by D R A if you're gonna raise and appropriate. And there's has been other times that we've had to change verbiage because of the way it was written.
I remember those.
I don't remember any of them, actually, I, I, I really don't, I wish I did, then I'd have something to go on, but.
I remember through my budgets that I had to present over the years. I ran across a D R A coming at the last minute. I'm talking about not just here, but they've been around for a while, I've had to deal with it. Similar to a situation where I had with a planner one time, this is the i- the idea. We wanna get another inspector in as well. Run left to this, remove the money around at the last minute. Kept everything the same. I just think happened that first year, happened the second year, which is, you know, the way it works out. Uh, and this is the same way.
I don't know, I think I have to go with my gut on this, I just, I don't like it. It's my opinion, the board can vote any way it sees fit. So do we have a motion to? Just to revote on this, we have to vote to revoke?
Amend article thirteen and revoke it.
How would you word that?
Well, legal already gave us a wording on it, right?
Right, so I mean.
I haven't seen it.
Basically, you're, you'd make a motion to change the language of article thirteen. Um, to raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and forty-five for wages and benefits.
You already wrote it in here, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
That's the, that's the change.
Yeah.
The change for the April one to December thirty-first. Um.
So is it revote, are we voting to change the wording first and then voting on the article?
Yes. Because I think if, if we don't bring it forth, I think we're not doing the right thing for the town. I really don't, I mean.
Agree, well, it's gonna go, it's gonna go forward anyway, so the taxpayers have a right, a chance to vote on it.
A hundred percent, but I think we as a board need to bring it forth because I think it's the right thing for the community. From a monetary standpoint and from a serviceability standpoint.
It benefits both ways.
It does, and it gives the highway department the tools that they need to go execute their job on a daily basis.
And I understand Bob.
We sit there and we're, we're all say that we, you know, back our department heads and Kevin's here and he's been saying it for years. I think almost every year, we've had a highway employee on the ballot. For the last five years, I would have to say.
And I think every year, it's, it's been very cleanly worded and there haven't been any last minute changes.
And I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know how we can clean this up in the, it's gonna say the exact, have the same exact verbiage.
But we'll have a chance to put it out to the voters and say, this is what we want.
Wait a year is what you're saying.
We're still bringing it up to the voters now.
It's wait a year and just inform the voters. There's, there's, there's too many things in this town that get brought to the voters that are haphazard and rushed and hurried. It always ends up backfiring.
Yeah, but in this case here, le- legal corrected it.
I get that.
And that's, that's more important than going, even talking about it to me.
Not even legal corrected, D R A did. The only thing that'll change is the dates.
That's all.
I don't think we could say anything else.
We're not, we're not changing it to make it happen, we're changing it because we're told. The only way to make it happen is to do it this way.
Because we never would have changed it unless we were told to change it.
Right.
Yeah, because, but you can't take the money that we were going to take according to D R A, right?
We can. We can, we just can't. It can't be represented in this warrant. Because we're at a tax cap, we have to raise and appropriate everything when other. Government bodies in town, they're allowed to do things and not raise and appropriate the whole entire value. We have to because we're under the tax cap.
So think of it this.
From the town side.
So that money will be in the, in the cemetery and the library and, and the highway seasonal lines. At the end of the year, that money will not have been spent. Because we will have raised and appropriated the whole salary. That will fall to fund balance. We will then remove those lines for the twenty twenty-five budget. Thus, giving you tax cap room because you're actually lowering the twenty twenty-five budget.
Using the fund balance.
Um, by not budgeting those lines. The only problem is in your first year, you cannot remove those lines from the budget. If we could remove those lines from the budget, we'd have the savings, we'd be golden. But you can't because if the article fails, we have no money to pay the contractors. That's.
The way it was written made sense right from the beginning.
I know.
But D R A came in because of legal, which is their job, okay, don't get me wrong, okay? It's correcting our flaw, I'll call it. Flaw's been corrected. Bob, I, I understand your concern and the method and the timing. You know, I can understand, but in the bottom line at the end, it's not gonna change.
I really wish that this article had come forward without all this baggage. It was just a straight article that said, we need a highway worker, this is, this is what it's gonna cost.
The whole intent was to get under the cap. You know what I mean, is, is, is to get under the cap.
Yeah, and that's, I understand that.
Without the cap, we wouldn't be doing this.
I mean, it did, like I said, it's gonna be the same exact thing.
And I think the budget committee could have figured out, like they did last year, to, to, um. To fit some things in, they were able to pull money from elsewhere to, to make. To be able to approve warrant articles or to endorse warrant articles, okay? They were able to take money from here to, to make this work. I think they could have done that.
And, and they actually did, they took eight thousand dollars off my bottom line so that this would fit within the cap. So if this fails, I still lose eight thousand dollars off.
Well, that can be put back in a deliberative. We did that with rec last year.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I don't trust that.
We could do that. But I, I just, I just wish this was a, a clean, straightforward, we need a highway guy. You know what I mean, I, I did, it's just how, that's how I.
Well, that's what it is, we've just showing that we're gonna use, we're gonna take away these three other services that we, we outsource for now. And we're gonna have the highway department pick it up, which is gonna give us savings to the community.
This way here, it's not showing that we're getting any money from them, it's just reducing these budget lines.
I, I underst- I understand that, I just, it's not sitting right in my gut, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, it's. All right, so let's, we have to have a motion to reword the article or to accept the new wording.
Accept the wording as it is, correct? The wording's been corrected in the article.
This is the correct wording.
This is the correct.
So I will make a motion to.
Amend?
Amend article thirteen, addition of full-time highway worker. Uh, to see if this. to see if the, see if the town will vote to hire a full-time highway employee effective one, April twenty-twenty-four, at an annual, estimated annual salary and related costs of ninety-three thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and further to vote and raise, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars for wages and benefits for the period of April one, twenty-twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. If this article passes, it will reduce or eliminate expenditures from the cemetery, library, landscape, library landscape and highway seasonal work line items in the operational budget. Because of those duties will be assumed by the new employee. Estimated twenty-twenty-four tax impact of six cents.
So we have a motion for.
I'll second.
We have a second for Mr. Weber to accept the amended version. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
I thought you were gonna say no.
No, that, we're not voting on the article.
Oh, yeah, sorry, then I'm gonna say aye on the wording, yes.
So that motion carries five zero zero. Now we need a motion to revoke the article.
I'll make a motion to vote it as reworded.
I'll second it.
We have a motion for Mr. Weber and a second for Mr. Gannon, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three two.
It'll bring you tap shoes and do a lot of talking at the deliberative. Hope it goes through.
The logic is there. I understand both sides.
And it's a tough one because I know you need the guys, I just, it's, it's, it's just not sitting right. And I hope maybe next year we get it.
I just, yeah, that if we pushed it, Bobby, you'd be the same next year. You'd have the same feeling in your gut.
No, I don't think so, because I think we'll have a chance to present it to the taxpayers.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna present it in deliberative.
Yeah, and, and.
And, and the voters, the guide, not, no secrets, like Doug was saying, glass house. Come on down and look what we do.
We know what you do, Kev, we know what you do. All right, up next, Litchfield Community Power Plan Update.
That's my ride.
What's that?
That's my ride.
Oh, hi, ride.
Two more items.
Go for it.
So, um.
Good luck, keep driving.
I'm not sure if not everyone can see the draft town meeting presentation.
I can't, it's not listed on the agenda, though. I was reading from the top part, okay.
Do we want to assign warrant articles?
Yes, we usually do that. All right, so. Let's see. Let's get down to it, okay. The zoning amendments, we don't, do we, we don't have to.
We don't.
Somebody for that, okay?
Plan does those.
Okay, so operating budget, we're, we're doing the assignments for the warrant articles. Okay?
Budget committee will do operating.
Yep, yep, chairman will do that, yep.
So.
Article five, Article six is human services.
I'll take my yearly one.
Okay, so six is.
Human services every year.
All right, Article seven, plow truck lease.
I'll take it.
Yep.
I'll take it.
You want that, okay.
Sure. I know how to do wings.
Kevin, plow truck lease for seven. Article eight, assistant librarian hours.
That'll be the library trustee.
That'll be the library, yep. Article nine, property revaluation.
That's my usual one.
Yeah, you don't want me to do that one.
I like that.
Article ten, to establish a recreation expendable trust fund.
Steve, you wanna take that one?
Sure.
If not, I will, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, because you're the rep.
Yeah, you're in the rep, you, okay, continue with it.
Article eleven, police contract, I'll take that one if anybody has no objections. And Article twelve, I'll do the cruiser two. So I can look at my budget committee friends. Article thirteen, full-time highway worker.
I'll take that one.
Article fourteen, Litchfield Community Power.
Is that me or Sam? Is it me?
Um, it's, it's the board's decision, whichever you'd like.
Do you want that?
Well, I ran it. Yes, I was on the commission, remember? I'll take that one.
So we do.
If the board wants me to take that one.
And Article sixteen is petition, um.
Article fifteen easement.
Oh, I'm sorry, the easement, I'm sorry, Article fifteen easement, public service easement.
I'll take it.
Oh, yeah, that's right next to the ball field.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Backyard.
That'll be good.
There you go, yeah. And Article sixteen is the petition.
Right, so, um, I did check with legal. Um, and you'll see there, um, I have left a blank as to recommended by the Board of Selectmen. So legal counsel has weighed in and said that the board may um, vote to recommend or not recommend, um, because it has, it's reducing the budget. The budget committee may vote to recommend or not to recommend. There's, so, there's a couple concerns. I did already tell you. You shall appoint a health officer.
That's law.
That is not question. That is an RSA.
Yep.
So regardless of whether the, um, health department is funded or not, you have that. Um. There's also another issue with the fact that, and we're not quite sure what this means, um, legal will have to weigh in on this in the future, in the case that they have, they have been paid more than a dollar at the time of the vote. Um, I just want to remind you that we have a vote on March twelfth. I don't know who they are in the article, but if you have a town, if that, if they is a town employee and they have worked the week prior to that March twelfth vote, and you do not pay said employee, you're breaking the law.
That's correct.
So I just, there's, there's some things to think about that um, the board will be down these two budgets and you will have expenditures which still have to legally be paid.
Regardless, you have to compensate, that's the law.
Yes.
So this petition basically eliminates building inspector.
It doesn't eliminate, causes them to quit.
No, um, so there's no position that is being eliminated.
No, the funding of that position.
The funding for these two departments goes to a dollar apiece.
So it'd be hard to fill that position in the future.
So how do you fund the position if it's been reduced to a dollar?
So salaries are set by the Board of Selectmen. The petition warrant article does not talk about removing any positions. So the selectmen will now be forced to figure out how to pay said salaries.
Until next year when another petition could come forward to amend it accordingly.
Well, and now the, I mean, it's not binding year to year, so, I mean, budget-wise in twenty-twenty-five, you could elect to fund the departments, but.
Can we read that, this article, so people on TV can understand what it says?
Absolutely.
And it's Article sixteen by petition. To see if the town will reduce budget zero-one dash four-two-four-one dot two-zero code enforcement and zero-one four-four one-one dot one-zero health department to one dollar annually. In the case they have been paid more than one dollar at the time of the vote, further payment will be immediately suspended, the new level to be enacted immediately.
What is the will of the board here?
Well, we can vote, we can vote this evening, we can vote at deliberative, I mean, nothing says when we have to vote.
Correct.
We can all sit back, think about the action we want to take, how we want to vote on it. Do we want to vote on it?
I don't think so, no.
So? Budget committee's gonna have to go through the same thing, right, do, on Thursday evening, or they can wait to deliberative after? Because regardless of how we vote in favor or not in favor, it's still, it's a petition article, so it'll go forward. It'll just reference. Correct.
Yeah, it has to go forward.
It goes forward nonetheless, it's up to us if we'd like to vote on it or not.
The question is if we vote on yes and no, like tonight. If we vote on it to say to support it or not support it, that's the question.
Correct, but we have all the way to the end of deliberative, by the time deliberative's done, that's when all of them are set in stone.
Okay.
So at the close of deliberative, many times we have to revoke an articles if people, if something was changed by the public at deliberative, we have to revoke, so we could still revoke that day.
So we can wait till then.
Yep.
And the budget committee has the same leeway on their part when they want to do it. Or if they want to. Because with this petition, the wording cannot change, but the dollar amount can. The breadth of the article cannot change.
And the wording being changed during.
You can still reduce. During deliberative.
During deliberative session, it can change during then.
You can't change the breadth of it. You can't change the breadth of it.
No, but that's still, you can change wording on it during deliberative.
You could change the dollar value.
Yes. Can't change the wording.
Can't change the wording.
Same if it happens, yeah.
Correct.
Right.
And the intent is to reduce those lines.
But it will go up on the deliberative, um, slides.
Yep.
As not being voted on.
Correct. At that point, we could say if we are, and budget committee can say if they are or aren't at the close of deliberative.
But it is much different than the warrant article that was brought forward in two thousand and nineteen. It does not, it, it basically zeros out two departments, um, budget-wise.
What was that? What was two thousand and nineteen?
Two thousand and nineteen was an article brought by petition to see if the town will vote to continue the code enforcement officer, health inspector, and zoning administrator as appointed positions. And it passed overwhelmingly.
After I left.
I mean, I just kinda went off a little bit about seeing something and being asked to vote on it right away, so I'm, I'm in favor of holding off for right now. Like to go, dig into it a little bit more, try to understand exactly what this means. How do you feel?
Same way, I think we will.
I'm the same way. Just wait and see.
Wait till deliberative.
Yeah, Steve?
I can wait till deliberative, yeah.
Okay, all right. That one will hold. That's it, right, for that?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll add the names to that.
How about community power now?
So, community power, um, there's several different communications that are required from the town to the PUC. This is applying for our approval from the PUC. Uh, so I worked with Standard Power, um, to submit the necessary documentation and a file, a docket has been opened on our behalf with the PUC. So anybody could go to the New Hampshire Public Utility Commission website and you can follow that. It does require a twenty-one day open comment period, um, so that has started. And residents could go out and comment or supply comments to the PUC. I did note, um, this weekend, there was a question, um, on social media. And I just wanna make sure that something's absolutely clear. The, the town of Litchfield is not entering the New Hampshire Coalition. So the New Hampshire Power Coalition is very different than what we are doing. And I, I saw some comments saying, yes, this was the warrant article that the Energy Committee was bringing forth, and no, it is not. So the New Hampshire Coalition is towns, um, and cities that have joined together and they actively manage their energy portfolio. So some being Nashville, Lebanon, Hanover, um, there's a bunch. That is very different, they have a board of directors that they vote in. They are, they are making their purchase, um, agreements. They are working with an independent energy auditor that they hire. And it's a much different legal structure than what we are entering in with Standard Power. Excuse me. So ours through Standard Power, who is a vendor that the town has dealt with for a number of years, and who actually holds our agreement now through NRPC, would be our contractor. We would work with them, they would go out and file the RFP and initiate the agreement that we would then offer to our residents. But this is not part of a larger coalition. This is Litchfield having control over what they choose or do not choose to offer. So.
Great point. I didn't see the post, so good, great.
I'll read it to you. Because it was sent, it was sent to me. All right, it starts out as, um.
Thanks for sharing it.
No problem. It's, um, it starts, well, it was, I guess it was partway through the conversation. Remember, though, we're only getting to say yea or nay on one single company. This company was chosen through the Board of Selectmen. Individually, I like every select person. How they perform as a group, I have nothing but, and I'm guessing this person says discussed. In the interest of full disclosure, I have a family member on the board. However, that doesn't change my mind about how they're feeling in the community. And someone, someone else, gentleman says, so if this passes, will I automatically be switched over to a company I know nothing about, at a cost I know nothing about? Even if I am more than happy with the electric provider I am using now? Which the answer to that is no, they can opt out, correct? At no penalty. As an added bonus, if I am switched automatically, then I lose, I then lose any discounts and might have to pay a penalty. Which I don't think is the case either, right?
So if they automatically have a energy agreement with another contractor, they won't be opted in, they can't participate.
So.
So if you are under contract currently, you cannot participate, you will not be opted in.
And it says a big no thanks, and then. And it says a big no thanks, and then he finishes with, the big question is, who on the Board of Selectmen is making a profit from this? Which just goes to show you that ignorance shows no boundaries. Some people make the dumbest statements. We're trying to help the taxpayers out in this town.
Would agree with that.
As we've been trying to do with the water and everything else, and you got some, for lack of a better term, and, and I'm going to probably apologize for this later, that you got some idiot who's got basement bravery, who gets on anti-social media and rants about the Selectmen making a profit, and I know this is unprofessional, but what a punch.
So the way it works is if they are currently working like with whatever the energy provider is, they, they won't even be able to get onto this, they'd have to cancel that contract, then opt in on ours if it's a better rate.
Correct.
And then they have to do it at the end of the billing cycle and all that, and then if they don't like it, they could opt out as well.
So pretty much we're taking ever-source users over.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct, so if they already have a contract.
What is the company, energy, energy something?
Direct.
Energy direct, there's, there's a few of them out there. There's some that are just tied into all green power.
It's showing up everywhere.
Yeah.
For some reason. Used to be ever-source or PS and H.
You know, in, in the distribution charge is still the same, because it's still ever-source's lines, the only thing you're reducing your rate on is the generation portion of it.
That's correct.
They're gonna go off and buy different types of generated power.
Versus the power.
At a different rate than ever-source does right now. So that's where the savings come from.
Before it's locked in, will they renegotiate the rates? Because supposedly ever-source is dropping rates as well, right?
Right, so, uh, great point. So, when they go out and they issue an RFP, um, to determine what, you know, they can buy power at, that comes back to the board.
Okay.
So we will have a rate, and if that's not low enough to save our, um, residents money, you don't do anything. You don't even start the program.
Correct.
Um, and, and it can go like that for a while. So, remember in October, right, the, and, um, ever-source's rates will generally go back up, they buy twice a year.
Yep, yep.
So at that point, ever-source could go back up and the rate that our, um, Litchfield community power comes in could be much lower, and then that's the time to, to act, right?
Yep.
Um, so, yes, that's all at the Board of Selectmen's.
But I think a lot of people are under the belief that once this is, if this goes through, they're locked in at that rate, we don't know what that rate is gonna be, and everybody's locked in until you decide to opt out, and that's.
You have to make the decision to get out.
If you try to get longer rates.
If you've already got a contract, you don't, you're not in.
At the end of any cycle.
Well, they guaranteed it would be lower at first anyway, number one.
Right, they won't do it.
And then they try to specialize to get the lowest price for the longer rates, so it's not the constant switching going back and forth.
Yep.
So that's kind of trying to stabilize it. Not like you're saying every two, two, six months, they go out, ever-source, right?
Right, ever-source.
So we try to get.
Every six months, if I remember right, with ever-source, right?
Right, so.
Vendor.
They try to do thirty month or something if they can, or twenty-four months.
So even if one or if a couple of months ever-source drops down for six months, chances are they're gonna go back up and then.
Yeah, the guy's gonna do the same thing.
Community's power would still be lower, hopefully.
Take the price of gas at a gas station, one's over here, one's over here. That's what you're doing. We had a lot of people volunteer their time to, to do this and to bring this forward to the taxpayers, and not one of them got paid. So I guess I'm still tweaked about the comment from some, nevermind, I won't say idiot again.
But it is very different than the Coalition.
Yeah, tongue in a cave.
That you have groups of communities that are voting and they make a decision for the Coalition. This is a decision that will be local.
Yeah, this is one contractor trying to get us the best price, brings it to us and we say yea or nay to him.
So we should know, um.
Selling electric cars to.
Probably by, um, the end of February.
Mm-hmm.
That the plan has been accepted, and, and Standard Power has done this, um, with many communities, hasn't been any issues.
And they've got a good track record, so, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see how it's a loss for anybody. Okay.
Okay.
We'll move on. Get me off of the soapbox. Town Administrator Report.
Back to water. Back to water. Um, so, we did get notice, um, that Pennetuck is looking to, um, withdraw DW twenty-three oh ninety-six B, which is a rate case, um, and so we assented to that, that's fine, if they want to pull that. They're looking to really address the consolidation, um, and so there's two important parts to that. Twenty-three one oh one, which is a joint petition for approval of the consolidation, which has a hearing February sixth, and then twenty-three oh eighty-eight, which is the change in rates for that consolidation, um, which has a hearing at one o'clock on the thirty-first, um, and both Leo and I intend to, um, attend to those dates.
Thank you.
Then, um, we have the website survey, um, which was pushed out a lot this weekend. Um, so, um, I just looked real carefully, uh, real quickly, and it was, I think, over a hundred and twenty-two responses, I think is what I saw, but, um, John, John's watching them with me. Um, so, we've said till February second, so if people can respond, um, we have to, the town staff has to have our preliminary information to Civic Plus, um, Friday. So we're gonna be looking at just basic things, and then we'll be incorporating all that, uh, feedback in later.
John, if you want to show me how to upload that to my computer, I'd be glad if you want to take the survey. I'll ask Steve, what are you doing?
Uh, there's a, so in the zoning ordinances, there's one that was left blank, um, and that's a stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm sure Kim will update us on that. There's, we have a leadership meeting on the twenty-fourth, um, a website design meeting on the thirtieth, um, and you already know that I did testify at the State House, um, and it does seem like that bill will be amended.
Good, good. Thanks for supporting. All right, up next, we have Selectmen Reports. Mr. Weber, Recreation.
We had another heating problem at Talent Hall this past weekend.
Good job.
And, um, they're coming quite frequently these days, and the repair person came back and said that we should probably protect and insulate that whole heating structure. Right now, the element's getting into it and so forth, so, another good reason that we're bringing the warrant article forth.
Yes.
To help out with repairs and maintenance for Recreation, because.
The elements are starting to freeze, is what you're saying?
What's that?
The elements are starting to freeze?
They freeze, all rain gets in there, snow gets in and so forth, shorts out some of the boards.
It's not enclosed enough, so you can't get everything out.
At least something, it's just, it sits outside with a chain link fence around it, right? Snow builds up on top of it, you know, the wind gets, it leaves everything.
It's a seasonal thing. And just for the record, I went there Saturday, watched one of my granddaughters, who didn't go, and it was forty-six degrees in the. And, um, they were waiting on the gentleman to show up, which he did, and, um, they had it fixed in no time.
Yep.
Uh, it is a problem, it's, it's a continuing problem.
And it gets cold in there quick.
Yeah, I was, again, go on the record and say, we need to build that fund.
We certainly do.
When it kicked on, did it kick off the, uh, fire alarms?
No, it didn't.
It does do that at times too.
Because it will do it.
Do that, go get the smoke inside.
It's just.
It's a warehouse style.
Okay.
Heater, so it just all of a sudden blows and the heat gets up to the ceiling, and there's no way of bringing it back down, because the paddle fans don't work inside of it.
You just wait for Doug to show up and say, sorry.
Bob, it's assigned, are the fans on when you play in there this time of year?
No, the fans don't work.
No, the fans don't work anymore, so once again, it's something else we need to go look at.
When did the fans die?
So.
Recently?
Oh, God.
Those fans have not worked.
Over five years.
As long as I've gone inside Talent Hall.
I had them working when I was here, they worked all the time.
I'd say for ten years they have not worked.
You had them running.
The controllers have gone on them, everything, so, another reason why we need that fund. Uh, the next event for the rec is the Lions Club Family Movie Night, which is Sunday, January twenty-seventh at two PM, and it's a Nemo. It's no cost or anything, so come on down and support the Lions and enjoy the, enjoy the movie.
I think the school's doing a fine Nemo play.
They are doing a fine Nemo play, coming up in a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
So it's, that Nemo time of year. Uh, next meeting is tomorrow evening. That's it.
All right, perfect, thank you. Um, up next, Heritage with Mr. Cannon.
Um, just two things, we're discussing changing our days so that we can get, get into this building, um, working that with John and gonna work with Kim to find an acceptable time and date. Um, Vice Chair Carl Frank has a drone and an awesome three sixty camera, and he took pictures of the Gaukel Building, um, outside and inside, and it was, uh, really interesting. I'm wondering if they put it on the, on page or not, if not, maybe we'll be able to get it up on the next one, but it's nice to have that.
It was on a website, there was a drone, picture, picture of it, from the, from way up of the house.
Yeah.
That was it, we didn't get anything else.
Okay, it's, it's great to have, uh, for historical purposes.
That it? Okay, um, up next, Mr. Lynch with Conservation School Facilities, Emergency Management?
Emergency Management's gonna meet soon, they met supposedly the fifteenth every go, and I was not available to go, because it's in the daytime, sometimes I can't get out. The other side of that, uh, the Con- Conservation, I met, I've already explained it, they haven't met since, it's too cold to meet, okay?
Serving heat.
As for the school, I met at the last one, the school facility, facilities, the gentleman who showed up and talked, he's the same guy, him and I were on the, this building together, and talked about the, the school, and he brought up his concerns, and see how that's gonna go, because where they're going, move one building, do this, you got Litchfield to deal with, and all kinds of stuff, you know? And that's still ongoing. Haven't met since.
Okay, Ms. Queen and everything else.
I appreciate much. Uh, Planning Board, we pretty much are focusing on Talarico Road, the development. We still have the zoning ordinance on a special meeting, will be January twenty-ninth, Monday, seven PM, to finish up that MS four stormwater zoning ordinance, right? So that's a public hearing, right? All right, so we meet then. Uh, SIP, we are not meeting until after the town elections in April. Next is the Energy Committee, we meet next Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, six PM here at the Town Hall. We have the warrant article out there for community power. Uh, maybe at this point, we can talk about if the board wants, we have to have a discussion with the Board of Selectmen, if they want to take it this committee further. The, you know, the agenda was to talk about community power, and we did that, but do you want to keep this committee going forward and start talking about an energy development strategy, if we want one? We'll have to have that discussion.
That's, that's, that's another whole.
Is it a possibility that maybe the, the water issue that we've been talking about could fall under that too?
Energy, well, I don't know.
Under energy?
Yeah. Energy and water?
Water, hydro.
Hydro power.
Definitely on the SIP.
Unless we put a hydro down.
That might be a separate.
We have a hydro contract, um.
You could put wheels across the river.
I think I would leave it with Weston and.
Yeah, Sam's.
Okay.
And legal now, that legal's involved.
Do we want to have that discussion about the Energy Committee? Can we put that on the agenda for next time? So if, what, what they want to do going forward with the Energy Committee? Uh, people on it do want to go forward, just letting you know if they're.
Okay.
But, uh, let's just see, uh, what visions here.
I think you should. Do you have a vision?
We had a charter, no, really, we need to have a, probably a vision or a strategy.
Are you meeting?
No, we're not gonna meet till after the warrant, well, we're meeting on the twenty-fourth, I'm not sure what we're gonna have a discussion on. We still waiting for legal on any of that contract?
No.
All said.
The plan has been, um, approved through legal, just waiting for the PUC, but, um, what public education we want. So I think that was.
That we can have that discussion, okay.
For Wednesday.
Okay.
As far as what information we want to get out before deliberative.
One more thing, Bob.
Hmm?
Uh, there's a Ke- Ke- Kevin Brown, excuse me, not you Kevin, the other Brown is another one in town. Where I read something in the newspaper or on something, the, uh, P C B issues for St. Cobain, what the town is doing or what's gonna happen on that one there. He had stated something about what they're gonna do for future concerns, because if this toxic that's in there is causing health events, they want to know what the state and anybody's doing on that. I didn't take it as you Kevin, was it? Okay, good. His, guy's name was Kevin Brown, okay? So I just want to let you, I'm gonna find that guy's name and his address and follow up with it.
Perfect. I see that all the work on Hillcrest Road is looking good, or wherever they're, yeah.
But I think that, didn't you say the state was gonna do more testing on their own, that separate from St. Cobain?
Yes, um, it's in the, um, emails I sent a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
The state issued and.
Yep, you did, I'm sorry. Yep, but I saw that on. Yep. So it's still very much in the forefront.
Economic Development Committee, we're meeting the following Wednesday, January thirty-first, and we will continue to work on our economic development town, uh, strategy. Well, sound survey for, um, see what they, the town wants to have for ideas for economic development. That'll be probably the first of a few surveys that go out. NRPC, the strategy and vision was completed, uh, it went to the full commissioner in December, a few small edits were suggested, that is completed. Instead of our normal March full commissioner meeting, which we usually do quarterly, it's moved up to February seventeenth, because we have, it's gonna, uh, be, uh, after our executive committee, we meet at six, the commissioner meeting will meet at seven, we're moving it up a month, because we have to have a deadline on a vote that DOT needs for us to do, so we're having our quarterly meeting a month early to get that deadline done. And that is all I have.
And lastly, the Budget Committee, um, we've gone through all the warrants and everything, the only thing, we, we have to meet Thursday night to vote on the school warrant, um, which ought to be fairly interesting.
You say that.
We got more information today and. Some of the numbers seem like they're still moving. I don't know, man, when you got a sixty million dollar project, if you don't have those numbers solid and concrete, it's, it's awful hard to endorse it.
Can't have it moved at this time of year. You get them going, you gotta go with them.
So we'll meet Thursday night. Does anyone have anything else? Yes, no? No, good, okay. So, that will conclude the public portion of our program, but we do have an item for non-public, right? That's what it says, yeah.
Uh, if needed.
I would, I would like to have a.
You do, okay. So. We'll have to go into non-public session.
I guess we can.
You want A?
Can I take care of it?
Hi, Kevin. Hi, Kevin.
Nice seeing you again.
RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three comma two, C in parentheses, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee or other levy, if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. The motion go into non-public.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Weber.
Second.
Second from Mr. Lynch, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero, we are going into non-public at nine o'clock. Everyone at home, stay safe, don't forget to vote tomorrow.